Do have it up there, Brandon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're welcome. To my hand. Mmm, I'm special.
Good evening. It is now six thirty-two P M and I would like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Would everyone stand and be for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, united in this world, liberty and.
Thank you, um. Madam Secretary, would you please call the row?
Costic. Mister Ivory.
Here.
Mrs. McConnell.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Present.
President Wilson.
Here.
We have seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements, we will start with Mister Ivory. I don't have any announcements here in front of me. You want one? You can pass this down. Grant applications are open. Classroom grant applications for the P P S Foundation, Community Foundation, Central Illinois are open now through September first. These grants will help bring creativity, hands-on learning, and real-world experience to students. Period Public School teachers and staff can apply for these three grants options, up to one thousand dollars for a classroom project, fifty hundred dollars for S S T E M, S T E M, grades from five to twelve, and five hundred dollars for field trip. Apply online at the P P S Foundation dot org today. Thank you. Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, good evening. Starting October fifteenth, all middle and high school students will follow the clear bag backpack policy. If you need a bag, Peoria Public Schools has you covered. Clear book bags are available for just twenty dollars at any middle school or high school campus. Cell phone policy, this is a friendly reminder. All middle and high school students should have their cell phones secured in a yonder pouch during school hours to comply with the district's cellphone policy. Let's stay focused, connected, and ready to learn.
Thank you. In introducing our newest student board member, Walter Hayes. Um, before the announcement, is there anything you'd like to say?
Um, how's it going, everyone?
Cool.
Yeah. Oh, um, I will be the uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, one of the student board representatives, and I go to Richwoods High School. I B program opens. Peoria Public Schools is proud to offer the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. This academically rigorous two-year program focuses on critical thinking, leadership, research, and global understanding through challenging coursework which is recognized by elite universities. Students in this program get up to twenty-two percent higher acceptance rates and scholarships offers at top-ranked universities. Applications are open now through November third for anyone who lives within the Peoria Public Schools attendance boundary. Parents of eighth, ninth, and tenth graders are encouraged to learn more at the parent info night in the auditorium at Richwoods on Wednesday, October first at six P M. Visit your school counselor today for an application packet.
Thank you. Cartwell, your mental health, okay, I'm gonna start over. Cartwell, your mental well-being matters. Peoria Public School has teamed up with Cartwell to offer free therapy sessions for students. If you're interested, simply reach out to your school principal to learn more and get started. Let's make sure everyone is in the best shape inside and out.
Good evening, everyone. Teacher apprenticeship. Are you ready to become a P P S teacher? Peoria Public Schools is now accepting applications for the teacher apprenticeship program in partnership with Bloom Board and Lake Erie College. This unique Earn While You Learn program lets you um, complete your um, degree and earn a teaching certificate in a, in special education while working in our schools. If you are a para educator or a school um, support staff with, within a associate's sixty credits and a passion for teaching, this is your pathway to becoming a certified teacher at P P S. To learn more a about this opportunity, a virtual info session will be held on September tenth at four P M. Virtual meeting information can be found on PeoriaPublicSchools.org backslash apprenticeship. Progress um, reports, first grading period for progress reports one ends on Friday, August twenty-ninth. Um, reports will be sent home with your student. Be sure to check their backpacks and review their progress together.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice President McConnell. This is Christina Rose.
Immunizations and physical exams. Mark your calendars. October fifteenth is sneaking up fast. It's time to roll up those sleeves for required vaccinations. Families of kindergarten, sixth, ninth, and twelfth grade students are encouraged to beat the rush and schedule an appointment with their preferred medical provider or visit the in-school clinics before the eleventh-hour scramble. And P T O council meeting, our first P T O council meeting of the school year is set for tomorrow night. Join us Tuesday, August twenty-sixth from six to eight P M at the administration building in P L C one. Our communications team is excited to connect with you, share ideas, brainstorm creative ways to make your P T O shine this year. Let's work together to make it the best year yet.
Thank you. Martha Ross.
Thank you. Good evening. The Wraparound Center. Uh, discover the Wraparound Center, your neighborhood resource hub conveniently located on Latrobe side of Treewind K eight. We are here to support uh, Peoria families with a wide range of services, including therapeutic counseling, a full-stock uh, food pantry, personalized ca- case management, and housing assistance. Our doors are open Monday through Friday, eight A M to four P M, welcoming not just Peoria Public Schools families, but all community members, whether you need a helping hand or just want to learn more. We're here for you. If you have questions or want to contact us, call three oh nine two eight two nineteen nineteen. We're ready to help you thrive. Second one is the seven mindsets. Uh, P P S is starting the twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six uh, school year with the first mindset. Everything is possible. Again, the first mindset is everything is possible. The mindset encourages students to dream big, believe in themselves, and push through challenges. It's a reminder that with every, if effort and determination, anything is possible. Let's make it a great year.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynn Costic.
Thank you. Peoria Public Schools is hiring. Transportation, we're looking for dedicated bus drivers and monitors to help safely get our students to and from school each day. In food service, we have a variety of positions open, including managers, servers, cooks, bakers, and drivers. Join our team and play an important role in fueling student success. If you're ready to make a difference in the lives of students, text J O B S, that's jobs two three zero nine two nine. Is that an exclamation point? Or is that just the end of the sentence? I don't know. Okay, jobs, J O B S, two three zero nine two nine. Exclamation point. If it doesn't work, take the exclamation point out. Read for thirty minutes. Thirty minutes, quiet and still, a journey awaits a page to fill. New worlds open far and near, stories whisper, wisdom clear. Half an hour day by day builds bright minds along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Costic. Moving on, we are now at item number five. Remarkable Spirit, Whitney Creep, Assistant Director of Transportation.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, for having us. Um, tonight I have the honor of um, recognizing someone who is very special to our transportation department. Sarah started in transportation about fifteen years ago as a driver um, and has moved into the office and is now serving as one of the routing supervisors. For the past fifteen years, Sarah has been a steady and reliable part of our team. Day after day, year after year, she has shown up with dedication and care for the students and families we serve. Sarah trained me uh, when I was moving from the driver position into the office position, um, and I've learned so much from her. She is truly a part of the backbone of our team and a person we can count on when things get tough. Fifteen years of service is more than just a number. It represents countless early mornings, late afternoons, and honestly, with transportation, some very late evenings also. It's a kind of quiet commitment that keeps our buses running during inclement weather and routing and rerouting around construction. She is a vital part of the active adaptation that it takes to support uh, the strong community that is Peoria Public Schools. On behalf of the transportation department and our school district, it is my privilege to present Sarah this award. Sarah. I just want to say thank you for your loyalty, thank you for your leadership, and your years of service to our students and their families. We are proud to celebrate.
Uh, Sarah, would she like to say something? No? You sure?
Transportation rocks regardless of what people may think. We really do work hard.
We know that, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah.
Awesome. Next we have. We are now at the point of presentations by the audience. Presentations to the audience are limited to five minutes, and we ask that you keep them constructive. Board Policy two colon two thirty, paragraph number three, provides cards will be accepted by the board secretary until the president calls the meeting to order. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker and no more than twenty minutes to each subject under discussion, except with the concurrence of the majority of the board. Our first speaker this evening, we have Mister Dan Walter.
Good evening, Mister President of the Board, Superintendent. Have a couple of quick points I wanted to get to. Tonight you'll be making a choice of who is going to select the new superintendent. That new superintendent, whoever he or she may be, will have to deal with some inherent issues that they are uh, are inheriting. One is they're gonna have an assistant principal uh, who is paid as a full principal, just happens to be the daughter of one of the school board members. That same person is also protecting a custodian who was found guilty of violating um, the Sexual Harassment Act, and nothing was done because he claimed he was protected by that same school board member. I have a question that I hope will be answered in this, is who approved the search team that posted the application before this board had voted on it? We still don't have an answer of who that was. Obviously, it wasn't the administration. It had to be one of the board members who did that. The other question I have is, doesn't the board policy on nepotism prohibit members of the board from voting on an issue where they are related to one of the people that's involved with that? I guess I would defer that to, to the lawyers, but I believe it is. We had a vote uh, on a lead, and I think that there are some members of the board that are related uh, to that that shouldn't have voted. The election program for students, we should post who paid for the buses for that and the pizza party afterwards, and there were some comments on the bus that seemed to favor some candidates. I, I am totally in favor of getting our students involved in voting. It's a, it's a critical thing that we have to do. But I would also like to find out um, who paid for those issues that were going on. And the last point I have is that uh, being a subbing, I have learned that Sterling and Hines are overcrowded. And uh, I had a kindergarten class uh, today. It wrote the old Roosevelt. Very good. Those kids were very well behaved. And uh, I still believe, I know it's not a favorite thing, that school board members and central administrators should substitute one full day a semester, just so that they get back into the classroom and find out how it's been. There are some of the people that are on the board that have never subbed. There are some pe- central administrators who taught, but it's been maybe twenty years since they've been in there. Things have changed, and I think if you really want to find out what's going on into a school, and I know we've got some board members who have done this, I think it would be a good act, strictly volunteer, to get out there and do that. That's all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Walter. Uh, up next we have Miss Kelly Phipps.
Good evening. Board members, Doctor Carrot. My name is Kelly Phipps. I've been employed by P P S for over eighteen and a half years. I spoke at the last board meeting regarding the implementation of a policy protecting staff from summarily being displaced just because the director likes someone better. I left before Doctor Carrot had the opportunity to address my com- comments, so I felt the need to come back as it seems that she has been given misinformation. Doctor Carrot, you stated that Doctor Coleman had offered to transfer me when Day Treatment and Rise Academy moved. That is not true. I was not offered to move. I was told by H R that I could apply for any open position. No guarantee of a job, just apply. I did not refuse to go anywhere. You stated that I worked for Day Treatment and Rise. My job description states administrative assistant, Wraparound Center. I had no reason to think I would not have a job after the school moved. I had expressed to Doctor Coleman when the move was first, mentioned that I preferred to stay at Wraparound Center. I spent twelve of my eighteen years in that office. That's my community. It's where I feel comfortable. I know the program, the neighborhood, the buildings, partners. Moral of the story is that after eighteen and a half years, I was disregarded and disrespected so that Doctor Coleman and Doctor Mitchell could have another Peoria High School staff onboard. Sorry, I'm very nervous. Other than favoritism, what would make them go so far in manipulating the system to get rid of me? I don't think you'll find anyone in the district, past or present, who would say I didn't do my job and did it well. I did apply for the building monitor position at Wraparound, but was not even given the courtesy of an interview. Building monitor position is the exact thing I did for the Wraparound Center since it opened. I don't believe that anyone could say the current building monitor is more qualified for the position than I am. No disrespect to Ms. Anderson. Doctor Carrot, you stated that we need to be fair to listen and problem solve together. Nothing that happened to me was fair. How can a person work for the district for eighteen years, then be told not only will her position be eliminated, but we are just going to replace it with a building monitored position only during school days? Just to have a sub sitting at a desk during non-school days, getting paid to do the things that were once part of my job duties for eight years? Listening, I had to email many, many times just for my grievance to not be taken seriously and my current concerns not listened to. Grievance I filed was not dealt with per contract. It's been two months, and I am still waiting for the step-one meeting to happen. No one has attempted to problem solve with me at all. What also needs to be discussed is accountability and transparency, and based on the last board meeting, it was a clear issue brought up and discussed by nearly everyone who spoke at the podium. If anyone needs clarification or has questions, I'm available at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, up next we have Mister Vincent Browder.
Good evening, Mister President, board members, superintendent. Uh, I'm here, about three years ago, I met Chief Boone at your S R O meeting at Illinois State University, and we talked about school safety and clear backpacks. From that point, I kept in contact with him, and I shared with him that my wife and I designed the number-one clear backpack in America, and it's African-American-owned, minority state-certified in Illinois. And so we've been uh, providing this product since two thousand and seven all across the country. I just drove in from Chicago about an hour ago, so I'm a little bit kinda, you know, shaky in that traffic, so bear with me. But I wanted to personally put a face with the product because a lot of times when things are sold in school districts, and I've been in school districts in Chicagoland for thirty-four years, and when things are sold in school districts, what takes place is purchases are made, monies are spent, and no accountability. So we put our name on the product to make sure that you know, if you decide to do business with us and partner with us, what we like to do is not just make money from the district, but partner in the form of scholarship, homeless students, things like that. In Chicago, we give back to our community quite a bit. My wife and I just celebrated thirty years of marriage, and we grew up single parents in the city of Chicago from single parents, and we saw our moms give back, and all we've been doing is giving back. So I just wanted to come meet everybody. I'll be here for a while if you wanted to have any questions, but thank you so much for even taking a look at our product.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mister Andres Diaz.
Good evening, board members, fellow residents. I'm here tonight because after two weeks since the last board meeting, we've seen some positive changes, as well as have some unanswered questions, and I hope you'll address them this evening. First, thank you for releasing the R F P and the bids received in there. It allowed myself and many other concerned residents the opportunity to understand the options presented to you as a board. Unfortunately, your release of records only raises more questions. The most important being, what were you thinking? With the awarding of this propos- of this contract under this proposal last week to, to, to the heart, not only were they not the lowest-cost technically acceptable bid, they weren't even close. From their experience to their price, what was it that made you want to select From the Heart in the last board meeting? A cursory search on the internet shows that there are lurid allegations of the C E O with From the Heart, from the hiring of a sexual offender in the schools twice, to the early termination of his contract with another school district here in central Illinois. Lots of questions are raised and inquiring minds want to know. Please explain why you think or thought they were the right firm to lead our search. Without that explanation, the rumors of board members having a conflict of interest, to the allegation that a superintendent has already been selected, and this is just some sort of Kabuki theater to continue to linger in this community, can't happen. Talk to us as parents and taxpayers honestly and with integrity. Tell us what is gonna come out and what is going through your mind, because we have questions. And honestly, if you don't come clean and talk to us as taxpayers and residents, all of this will come out at some point, and it'll cause distress and issues, not only for this search, but for that future candidate and for you as board members. My end goal in all of this, and why I'm speaking out tonight, is because I want what's best for our community and my children. And after having seen how all of this is played out, and the lack of openness and transparency by this board, I, like many in this community, question the integrity of this board and the decisions that you're making. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miss Jessica Heitz.
Good evening. Two weeks ago, I sat here and heard words that have stayed with me. In response to comments concerning large class sizes, the response was given, and I quote, "This is a good problem to have." I recognize that more students need more money coming into our district, which we need. I also, it also represents more families believing in the education that Peoria Public Schools can provide, of which I'm a product. I believe that what was meant, I believe those are the things that were meant by those words. But as a parent and for my children who sit in classrooms at or above the limit set by this district's own practices, this is not a good problem to have. It's not a good problem when my fourth grader has learned math for two years solely from a computer because his teacher can't provide the instruction that he would most benefit from. It's not a good problem when classrooms are so overcrowded and noisy that children have to wear headphones. Some children need to wear headphones just to stay focused. And it's not a good problem when choices are made to then reduce staffing, like the decision not to replace a retiring teacher at Keller this year, despite our unusually large second-grade class. These are choices made year after year across the district. If having more students is truly a good problem, then it should lead to better learning conditions, not worse. Part of sitting around that horseshoe is listening and respecting the people you're here to serve. Too often, those of us that take the time and effort to engage are flat-out dismissed. What we bring forward as real problems are brushed aside, not acknowledged as shared concerns, not even with the courtesy of a discussion about possible solutions, just dismissed as if these issues don't actually exist. Acknowledging reality is the first step toward real change. Our children deserve more than dismissal. They deserve solutions.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening will be Mister Doug Shannon. I just, I just grabbed the car. I mean, I, I, that's fine. It's okay. Mary Beth, would you like to come now? Yep, yep. So our next speaker will be Mrs. Mary Beth Cunningham.
Um, I appreciate the ability to go first. Uh, we compared notes and figured maybe some sequential um, status might help. Um, I'm here tonight because a superintendent search is one of the most consequential decisions this board will make, and the public deserves a process that is fair and transparent. When we talk about selecting a search firm, the right question isn't, isn't who do we like, but what standards does our district deserve? At minimum, those standards should include a proven track record of successful superintendent searches, clear deliverables for community engagement, and transparent, reasonable costs without hidden or uncapped expectations. Proposals that fall short on these standards raise real concerns. These aren't personal criticisms. They are objective gaps that matter to our district's credibility and to this community's, and to this community's trust. The timeline raises real concerns. On July fifteenth, two thousand and five, board members received correspondence attack, attaching proposals from From the Heart and B W P and Associates. From the Heart's materials, as well as B W P's materials cover letter, both show late June proposed dated and were also shown as July first. Yet the district's press release didn't go out until July twenty-first, announcing an official submission window through July thirty-first. In other words, at least two firms were. In other words, at least two firms were circulated to the board before the public window even opened. I see no evidence either firm resubmitted during that July twenty-first through the thirty-first window, and this is available per a public FOIA that was shared by someone else, to someone else with me. By contrast, Zeal didn't, Zeal did exactly what the district asked. They submitted during the July twenty-first through thirty-first window and followed up once, when they received no confirmation of receival. Based on the records I reviewed, there was no acknowledgement back, and Zeal was not included among the firms brought forward for board consideration, despite complying with a stated process that consistently undermines confidence in the fairness of this selection. By contrast, we now have firms like IASB, Hazard Young, Atea and Associates, and McPherson and Jacobson that demonstrate strong experience, community engagement process, and more transparent cost structures, that the, that's the level of rigor we should be expecting while they're following the rules. There are broader transparency issues as well. In the same FOIA response, one of my own emails appeared, which is what prompted the response to be sent to me, with a portion redacted, even though the redacted line referenced a matter already discussed and voted on in open session, i.e. information already in the public record. Overredacting public information erodes trust. I also noted board-related messages going to redacted non-district email addresses. If official business is being routed outside district accounts, it raises concerns about record retention, transparency, and even if unintentionally, privacy risks, given that board packets can include sensitive student or personnel information. This also helps explain why in recent meetings, community members have been instructed to send their emails to the board secretary instead of directly to board members. If emails aren't consistently opened or read by members themselves, the public rightly questions whether input is being fully received. Is it really too much to expect that board emails are reviewed carefully at least twice per month before meetings? For decisions of this magnitude, communication cannot be treated as optional. Process inside these meetings matters as well. At the last meeting, when the board's attorney tried to correct how items should be read and voted on under Robert's rules, the response was, "This is how we've always done it." Longevity does not equal legality. The point of rules is to protect clarity, order, and public confidence. Taken together, early circulation of some firms before public window opened, lack of acknowledgement for a firm that followed the rules, overredaction of already public information, irregular email practices, and resistance to parliamentary guidance, the picture is of a process that needs tightening, and our community deserves better.
I'll put you to the back, though, Doug. Yeah, okay. Our next speaker will be Ms. Sabrina Dewey. Okay, this is close.
My name is Sabrina Dewey, and I'm honored to speak with you today, not only as a proud alumni of the Peoria School District, but as someone whose life was changed forever by the support, care, and dedication of this community. From my early days at Flesker Hinton, to Dr. C.T. Vivian Primary School, then Liberty Leadership Middle School, and eventually Richwoods High School, I was surrounded by educators, therapists, support staff who believed in my potential. As a quadriplegic with minimal, with minimal mobility from the neck down, I faced many physical and systematic challenges growing up, but I never faced them alone. The Peoria School District didn't just educate me, it empowered me. It gave me the tools, technology, and encouragement I needed to thrive, including my Tobii Dynavox eye gaze device, which I still use every day, to communicate, work, and engage with the world around me. Today, I have the privilege of serving as the Lead Research and Grant Coordinator at We Hear You Incorporated, a business committed to improving accessibility and inclusion for individuals with disabilities. One of the innovations I am most proud to introduce to you is the Hero Door Opener. The Hero Door Opener is a revolutionary, portable, and easy-to-install device that transforms any standard door into an automatic one without the need for expensive construction or renovation. It is designed to be installed in minutes and allows individuals to open doors using a mobile app, a wireless fob, or the traditional wall button. This device is not just convenient, it's liberating. It restores independence and dignity to people who, like myself, rely on technology for daily access and autonomy. It is ideal for schools, hospitals, homes, and community spaces, and the environment where accessibility matters. And I know this audience understands the profound difference accessibility can make. Sometimes, the right tool at the right time doesn't just open a door, it opens a life. That's what the Hero Door Opener is about. That is what We Hear You is about. As district leaders, you've already made significant strides in supporting diverse learners and fostering inclusive environments. The Hero Door Opener offers an ability, an opportunity to build upon that foundation, enhancing what's already in place by addressing a critical but often overlooked barrier, physical access. For students, staff, and families with disability, the op, the ability to open a door without assistance is an added convenience. It's a statement of autonomy, dignity, and inclusion. If you're seeking practical, scalable, and constructive ways to strengthen the district's accessibility efforts, I would welcome you the opportunity to connect, and that together we can expand on the most important work you've already done. And enjoy that every door in the district is open to everyone in every sense of the word. You can purchase directly from our website, wehearyouopendoors.com. And we have actually received an email from a mother whose student goes to Dr. C.T. Vivian Primary School, that one of the traditional wall buttons does not work. And I remind you that inaccessibility to schools is a clear violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a federal law that protects people with disabilities. Any electrician or maintenance can tell you that fixing these traditional wall buttons are easy and cost-effective, they don't cost anything. Thank you, not only for your time today, but for the years you invest in students like me. Because of you, I now have the voice and platforms to help others find their independence. Thank you.
Up next, we have Mr. Doug Shannon.
Thank you, Board, for the time, and also thank you for letting that last speaker go. I think we can all agree that that's remarkable for Peoria Public Schools to be able to empower such a great story, so thank you for sharing. I'll be speaking about the superintendent's search, more specifically on some of the Open Meeting Act concerns that have been expressed. I want to kind of start with a quote, that the person who loves their dream of community will destroy the community, whereas the person that loves the people around them will build the community, will enrich it, will strengthen it. And with pride and ambition and our own agenda and our own goals, it's very easy to forget the three groups that we serve when we're doing something for the district, especially when you're around the horseshoe, which would be our students, our staff, and our taxpayers. And I understand that the goal of replacing Dr. Karat with an outstanding candidate, I'm sure there's motivation for expediency, but thoroughness and a qualified, outstanding candidate should be the goal, again, for our students, for our staff, and for our taxpayers. I had the privilege or the misfortune to read through a two-hundred-and-fifty-plus-page FOIA over the weekend, and among those things, it was amusing to see that the experienced search firms that were inquiring about our opening communicated with Kami Ross, Secretary of the Board, looking for an RFP, and she responded to those that inquired that we did not have an RFP, that we only had a press release, and that they could find all applicable information for their submission in the press release, reminding you again that a couple of candidates that submitted their proposals did so before the press release came out on the twenty-first of July of this year. So, we teach our students test skills, right? So, if you've got an SAT test and there are five answers, there's always going to be two distracting answers that are terrible answers, all right? You know, sort of two, you know, one of these things is not like the other, and somehow, as a board, we managed to select one of the distractors that was a terrible choice, all right? No experience, in fact, From the Heart, not only did they have no experience, they ended up being the most expensive bid, and even though the press release came out on the twenty-first of July, on the fourteenth of July, From the Heart didn't even have superintendent search on their board, on their website, which I'll also note that even though they've removed the guts of the job posting, if you go up there right now, it's live, Peoria Public Schools Superintendent Search is still live on their website as a link. So, even when they removed the link, they couldn't do that correctly. So, I do not understand how they were considered or how they even got there. So, I would love it if our attorneys or Dr. Wilson, as the President, if we could request them to remove that link fully from their page, they should not be representing that they have our contract. Dr. Milton is actively the CEO and the primary partner of From the Heart Education. He is also, Dr. Milton is also the primary partner and CEO of BH365, Black History 365, that provides curriculum for the district in some incidents, which from everything I hear is good curriculum. But given, and I guess this is really specifically kind of for the attorneys, a little bit legalese, given entity formation principles, if those businesses were to have an ERISA retirement plan or 401K, it would be very likely that because of incidents of ownership, they would be required to have and share the same 401K plan or simple IRA. They would have to have the same benefits package for their respective employees because of the incidents of ownership. They are, for all intent and purposes, the same entity, just with different shells, different liability sheltering of the entity formation. Why this is important is because, as previously mentioned relating to some of the past things by Mr. Walther about the board not disclosing familial or potential concerns, Board Member Martha Ross is listed in district curriculum as a team member for BH365. But that in and of itself on its face is not a, necessarily a conflict of interest, but it's absolutely something that for just integrity and public transparency should be listed. She should consider, and she, only she will know, whether or not she should recuse herself or whether she should pull herself back. I would leave that to her long experience and standing on the board, but that is definitely something that would impugn the rest of the board's decision if it were to pass. Ultimately, From the Heart is the least experienced, having never done a superintendent search before, from anything that we can see. They were the most expensive, whereas IASB is the leading expert in superintendent search in Illinois. They, their costs are subsidized by our membership already, they are the least expensive, they have worked with, and I'll finish with on this point, they have worked for Peoria Public Schools, one, District 150 before, and in their last hire, they happened to hire the reigning Superintendent of the Year for Illinois, Dr. Sharon Karat. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we're at item number eight, approval of August eleventh. Oh, I'm sorry. Response to audience presentation, Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Wilson. There were, I think, eight comments, and one, two, three, four, so half of them were in reference to the superintendent's search, and as I said at the last board meeting, there's superintendent's lane and the board lane, so that is, that piece is in the superintendent's lane, so I'll leave that to the, to the board. Ms. Phipps, thank you for coming back again. Let's schedule something tomorrow. I did not bring my phone, it has my calendar on it, but when we get back at the end of the conclusion of this meeting, I will follow up and I would love for you to come. I love that you said, you know, I always talk about fairness, listening, and problem solving, let's put our heads together and problem solve that situation, okay? You're welcome. Thanks again for coming, good seeing you. Ms. Browder, thanks for coming as well. We happen to have a surplus of clear book bags. The good thing is, this is a long-term initiative that the board, I think, in a smart way and visionary way, have supported, and so I suspect in the future, we will need additional clear book bags, and so we would love for you to leave your card with, with a couple of our staff members are right here, and, and we actually purchased the clear book bags from a minority firm, but it's nice when they're in our state as well to support them, so we'd love to, if, when, when, when necessary, kind of reach out and take a look at your prices, okay? But right now, there is no need. The schools still do have quite a bit, and we have a surplus here at Central Office as well. Thank you. Let's see. Ms. Jessica Heinz, thank you so much for coming, I appreciate, we love you, number one, we appreciate all that you do for our schools, you do a lot, and I sent this response because I kind of anticipated some class size feedback. Let's see. So, I, one of the things I'll just say, because our union president talked about it last, our last board meeting as well, my team and I would like to say that this has really been one of the best class size collaborative meeting that we've experienced for about eleven years since we've started, and as I reported at the last board meeting, the district and the union have a class size review process that have been working very well for many, many years, and it is a process that is codified in the contract with the teachers' union, which outlines the enrollment goals and how to resolve any concerns that might be brought up by teachers or even parents. So, so far this year, the joint meeting, they've already met twice already, and I was just thinking today that I, I was kind of curious about what's happening around the state, and wanted to share that Peoria Public Schools' average class size is nineteen, overall average class size is nineteen students. The state is twenty-one, average class size overall, the state is twenty-one students. Our class size is below the state's. Rockford, I was curious about Rockford, I'm always curious about our peer districts, their average class size is twenty-two. Dunlap's is twenty-four, and, and then we're also below Danville and Springfield, so overall, again, it's nineteen, our average class size, so that's pretty low. And so, it's, I know it's a little frustrating, but, I mean, I wish I could say, "Trust us, we know what we're doing," but I won't because I do. we know what we're doing, but I won't because I do, I do like the pushback, and I love the independent thinking. My team members know that. But it is, it truly is an art and science, and we have to take a lot of things in consideration because even when school started, we shut a couple of classes, we're like, okay, it's, it's very large, and then in a couple of weeks, we have to reopen it because individuals have moved. So, the mobility, the mobility factors is also key, and so some classes, as I said, that were closed have been opened because of mobility. And I would just recommend, so obviously, we talked about this today too, it's, this is so fluid, right? And I would really recommend anyone who's curious to visit the schools and, because part of my superintendent, superintendent update was to thank all of the Peoria Public Schools staff, every department, where, you know, they, they've done such a nice job. They're working hard from the SROs to the custodials, to our teachers, to custodians, maintenance, you know, our principals are the hardest-working folks around, and I, I am thinking I'll, I'll forget, you know, once you start listing, right? You kind of forget all of our assistants and, and everybody, our monitors. I'm just really, really proud of, of where they are to date since school started, so wanted to thank them for their efforts and their dedication to Peoria Public Schools, and invite anyone to come and check out for yourself each, you know, the classes. I would love for you to see those as well, so. I, oh, and Sabrina, I've seen you in action. I'm very, very proud of you. Thank you for coming. You are definitely credible. Just so happen that, that we know the founder of We Hear You, Paul Peer, right? Paul Peer?
Yeah.
Peer Paul. He worked at the museum. He actually spoken to my superintendent roundtable several times. He's done some work for us at PPS. I know he moved the business to St. Louis, so I'm, I'm happy he, he's working with you and hi, you, you're, you're a great addition to the company, and we can definitely follow up with some of the things that you've observed, and so feel free to send an email of the, the best means of communication for you, and I know you referenced CT Vivian, so we were interested in definitely, right, board, looking at, looking at, looking at opportunities for improvement. So it's good to see you, and again, we're super proud of you. So, you're very welcome. So Superintendent, I'm sorry, President Dr. Wilson, I think that's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Karat.
You're welcome.
I have something to say.
Okay.
I'd like to respond to some of the comments, and it is public knowledge that our superintendent will be leaving June of 2026. She won the statewide superintendent. It's public knowledge globally. We get proposals and offers from companies all the time, selling something or presenting something. The fact that two firms were aggressive and sent that to us is not a problem because it's common knowledge. Secondly, when we opened it up, we received other ones. We've, we have since then received some more as of last week. That's, that is the nature of the business. To be clear, we did not select From the Heart. That was not a board selection, so let us leave here with that understanding. That was what was up for, for us to vote on, but we did not select them only. Many of us did not support that, and so as we are doing tonight, in front of you later, you will see what the board chooses, and I think we need to be very cautious as we, as you guys are out in the public. This presumptive misinformation known that seems to run and fly, it's not, it doesn't, it's not only us who must have integrity, it is all of us, parent, everybody who talks in the mic. Our goal is to be respectful, to be decent, and to be kind, and some people tend to lean to personal attacks, which is not professional, and it's not healthy. This board does have integrity. We all serve in a very sacrificial way, and this is a volunteer board, too. Lastly, this is our district, and we serve in the best interest, not only for children, families, communities, leadership, and as I've said to anybody, we welcome information. You can email us. It doesn't mean we will always answer because we do have full-time jobs, and so we appreciate your, your unpatient, but I think we need to move in wisdom as we are going forward, that we don't, we don't fear people's feedback. We don't appreciate the disrespect, so let us be respectful, let us be decent, and let us be kind, and thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, approval of August 11th, 2025 minutes. Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to information items. Item number one, superintendent update.
Thank you, President Dr. Wilson. You know, today, well, last week, it started last week first, wanted to give, just, just say that the staff at Manual, Dr., Dr.
Hawks.
Hawks, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Hawks and her team, they went through a lot last week, and sometimes it's just like, I, I just don't have an explanation as to, like, why this thing happened, right? And so we're aware of what occurred at Manual, two shoot-ins, and, and so I was just really touched, and a couple of board members were at the school as well. We visited, we converged, we helped them problem solve, but yesterday, Sunday, Chief Etcheverria, who works very, very, very closely with Peoria Public Schools, one of the best police chief that I've worked with in my role, 11 years as superintendent, and I've worked with several, just a community man, all about business, and he, you know, he's just really good at what he does. He said, Doc, this is what I'm thinking. I'm thinking of, I know it's late, but it, this has been on my heart, just putting a call out to the community, particularly the fathers, the grandfathers, what do you think about it? I said, I love it. Go ahead and go for it. I'll support it. I called with President Wilson immediately. He said, Doc, I'm gonna get at least 10 of my fraternity brothers. I, Reggie Livingston, I just, I sent it to my staff, Mr. Willis, Mr. Bell, all the men, Mr., Mr. Ivory, all the men just really responded. I had a 6:30 appointment that meant that I couldn't get away from, and so I got there about 7:15, to a huge surprise. Over, Mr. Willis, over 100 men, close to 200, all lined up, and were just really welcoming the children, welcoming the students, and they were shocked. They had just such a great smile on their face, I think probably thinking about the support, the encouragement that the community was providing to them, and that is what I love about our city, city of gratitude, city of love. The city loves Peoria Public Schools. That's, that's been really, for me, motivating and been pushing me. It's, it was just a quick call that police chief, I said, hey, everyone, this is his idea, and look how beautiful, and the children and staff and everyone really supported, they were, they were just happy that that was an idea. So, a couple of you were there, I'm sure you can maybe make some comments, and I just wanted to, before that, just wanted to thank, I read the newsletter from Mr. Bell's department once in a, a couple of times a year. He, he has a custodial maintenance and stadium newsletter, and I picked up something. He wanted to thank two of his individuals from his department, Dominique Stenson, he's with the multilingual dual-language program as head custodian of the, you know, of the month, and then also the, a young man by the name of Darren, who's at, who's at Glenn Barton, and they're doing everything from helping teachers move, cleaning buildings, HVAC updates, whatever you want, getting the buildings, and the buildings are amazing. We have the best buildings and grounds custodial staff. You look at the buildings, they might be 100 years old, but they look like they're, you know, they're, they're in decent shape. So just wanted to thank Brandon Bell and, and Susan Howard for putting that information out. Sometimes they'll put some fun facts out, and I, I'm like, oh, I didn't know that. That's pretty cool. And, yeah, and then I, I wanted to thank our staff as well. I'm just really proud of the staff. This work, my mother used to say, our work is not for the weak and feeble, and, and everyone who selected Peoria Public Schools, they're committed to making a difference for the children. They understand, when I was at Manual, I'm like, okay, do you know, do you, do you know us? Do you know our clientele? Do you understand what you're getting yourself into? And, and so we start there, and, and so this, this is what makes us very special and unique as a district, so thank you to all of our staff members who are out there. We still love your jobs. You're making, I see a lot of our teachers in the back, you're making a huge difference for the kids, and you love it with a smile. Some of you have been doing it for 30 years, and you still come back every day, so just wanted to thank them.
I was gonna wait till the end, you know, when we talk about presentation and suggestions by board members, but Dr. Karat, you kind of kicked it off. I would like to say a huge thank you to Chief Eric Etcheverria as well for leading that initiative. It was inspiring to see all those community leaders outside welcoming those students that they came into the school building. I think, you know, it really underscores the importance of keeping our schools safe. You know, past board meeting, we had the weapon detection technology. That didn't quite go through. I know there's one more that we want to pilot as well. I think we need to get that piloted, and then maybe look at our options and see about getting that back on the agenda. Also want to look at just different things that we can do to support our students, staff, and school resource officers. I know me and Dr. Karat were talking a little bit just about cameras, technology, but also radios for our school resource officers as well, something that they can kind of communicate back and forth with the Peoria Police. So I just want to look at that, look at those options, and kind of put that out there. But again, that was a great job by Chief Eric Etcheverria. Don't you want to say anything?
No.
All right, so moving on, information items. Item number two, financial update. Mick Willis.
Year-to-date revenue totals $32.9 million. Year-to-date expenditures are at $24.7 million. Both revenue and expenditures are as of today, August 25th, 2025. This time last year, we were sitting at about $14.8 million in terms of revenue. The huge difference between this year and last year, we have quite a bit of federal and state funding that showed up on the books this year as compared to this time last year, so that, it was a good sign and, and good to see. As I've mentioned before, our budget is scheduled for adoption late September. As a result of that, our budget column here in this report will, will, will not have information in it until that budget is passed. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Willis? Seeing none, moving on. We have item number three, proposed expenditures over $2,500.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Seeing none? Vice President?
Vernon Jones, yeah, they, yes, they, they are, they are doing work at Manual for the track. They also are doing work at the stadium, the artificial turf at the dome, yeah. So they're, they're working in both those spots.
That's the annual license for the time clock system. I, I don't recall, but I can certainly try to find that information out. Yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Um, I noticed you, the Manuels, is Manual getting a brand-new track?
Yes.
Um, I, I know that in 2019, did they get a new track in 2019 when the other schools did?
They had basically track repairs at that time.
Okay, so it wasn't the full?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I thought maybe it was under warranty. It hasn't been very long.
No, no, it, no, we, we did some minimal repairs at that time.
Okay, but they can have track meets at the school?
Yes.
Okay, I know some of our schools couldn't, so they were redoing the tracks so that they could have them at the school, so I just wondered. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mick Willis? Seeing none, moving along. We have item number four, report on requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests. Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Dr. Greg Wilson. Since our board meeting on August 11th, we have received two new requests. There were also four requests noted on August 11th. So to date, we have received 43 requests for the 2025 calendar year at a cost of $2,150. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. We are now at our consent agenda. Vice President McConnell.
Mr. Chair, consent agenda items. Number one, gifts to school district for a total of $8,900. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resource report. Item number five, overnight field trip, Richwoods High School girls tennis team. Item number six, overnight field trip, Richwoods High School, our, their junior ROTC. Item number seven, Richwoods overnight field trip for, for ROTC. Number eight, overnight field trip, Richwoods ROTC. Number nine, update salaries, regulations for auxiliary personnel. Item number 10, intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria County Regional Office of Education and the Safe School Program. Item number 11, intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria County Regional Office of Educational, Regional Work Experience, and Career Exploration Program. That concludes our consent agenda.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any items that board members would like to pool for separate discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary. Oh, can I get a motion in a second? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
She said aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Deliberation agenda.
In abeyance, listed on the report dated August the 25th, be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item thirteen, approval of retention, employment up. That's not even mine.
I mean, you could still finish, deliberation, yeah.
Okay. Um, approval of retention slash employment of superintendent search firm. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the retention of a search firm to perform the superintendent search process during the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so we are now at the point of deliberation regarding this um, action item. Is there anything that board members would like to share at this time? Anybody like to discuss anything as it relates to the search firm?
Um, I would like to make a uh, statement. Um, I do like the proposal that we received from the local company in um, Chicago, BWP. Um, they've been engaged in the state of Illinois for several years. They're very um, comfortable. Um, I do like the idea of us keeping our money in the state rather than sending it out of state and then also paying for travel. Their uh, proposal will be same-day travel um, without any um, um, overnight stays. And I think that would be the least um, expensive um, for the board.
I, before I comment on which one I support or don't support, I was um, it was news to me tonight to learn that there were bids that were tried to be sent through that we did not receive. Um, I would like to know more about why we didn't receive some of the bids.
But you did receive all of them. You received them all. There were no bids that came in.
Mrs. Cunningham mentioned a zeal.
Let's, let's defer to Kami real quick. Miss Kami, was there any that?
No.
You're the one who handled that process.
Yeah, so I'll be at worst a minute.
Did we get one from Zeal? I've never heard of it before.
I've never heard of that company.
Um, on a separate note, never mind, I'm not, I'm not ready to.
It's now, now's the time.
It is.
Unless you want, does anybody else like to speak?
I, I would like to say that um, after digging in, I feel like the deeper I got in my research, things just started falling out of the closet, like bones were falling out of the closet, so to speak, if skeleton, you know, we had skeletons in the closet. And that's why I pushed to see if we could get IASB's proposal. Did you guys all see it? We got a proposal, it came through in our packet, so we, that was the newest one. Um, looking through different firms and I don't find joy in bringing out people's dark sides or, you know, some of this stuff is rumors, sometimes the media doesn't always tell the truth, right? I feel like it would be due diligence for us to the city of Peoria to just not pick one of these firms and go with the Illinois Association of School Boards. And they actually are the lowest bid at thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. They have over fifty years of experience. It kind of keeps the local politics out of it because it's in the hands of the state. We used them last time we did a search firm. I'm not sure who the president was, but some of you would have been on that board when they hired Dr. Karat. I just feel like it kind of keeps some of the rumors and things out of all of it and just giving it to the state and spending thirteen thousand four hundred. Honestly, I feel like we all know the names of the people that are going to apply no matter what firm we pick. But it almost seems silly to even hire a firm, but I know that that's what the board wants to do, so I'm respecting it. I get it, I get it. But I just feel like I'm leaning towards IASB for these reasons without going through the list of all the things that I'm sure you guys were getting in your inbox as well.
Yeah, and just notable that, just notable that we received that bid a week ago, because that's just the nature of the business. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a um.
I wanted to speak still. I just was hoping that some of you that are gonna um, support these other companies would speak first. But um, if no one's gonna speak in support of it from the heart, that's great news.
Uh, two seconds. You were gonna make a motion. Are you okay with?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you need to ask to um, yield to the floor. Yeah, I was talking, you probably need to ask the chair.
May I please speak on my comments on the deliberation part before we motion or table or anything?
Well, you can make your comment when I'm done with my motion. I'd like to offer a motion that the board select BWP. BW.
She was making her motion, so.
Okay, I just didn't realize there was no more conversation.
Let's, let her deliberate. We can.
We should finish.
Yeah, for sure, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you for clarity. Um, okay, so I did um, read all six proposals. I was grateful to see IASB come through last week. Um, I know it had been asked for before that, um, and so I'm glad that we finally were able to view it. There were some pros and cons to all six proposals. Um, things I liked about from the heart were the year of coaching they offer afterwards, as well as their um, retreat that they do to facilitate a relationship between the superintendent and the board. However, those are things that we could probably ask any firm to do afterwards, and so they're not reasons to hire from the heart. Um, I liked BWP's proposal for the reasons that um, all of the school districts it listed were in Illinois, that it is based in Chicago and like you said, there won't be any overnight travel stays. However, the largest school district listed was half of our size with six thousand seven hundred students, which concerns me. Um, and IASB allows us to electronically survey all stakeholders and then analyze that data to share it with not only the board, but the community, so there's a lot more transparency and integrity, which are huge factors for me. I also like the idea of them creating like a candidate profile based on the stakeholders' feedback and our feedback so that we can more objectively look at all of the candidates who apply. Um, several of the other firms had a digital platform, but they have also been connected to a certain CEO that has made questionable decisions. Um, and while I don't necessarily have anything against any particular individual, I'm looking at a firm that can bring experience as well as integrity, as well as an affordable price point, and IASB has all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close. Mr. Ivory?
You know, it, it's important for me that um, no, whatever decision we make, you know, we live in a democracy uh, where all of us get a chance to have an opinion. And once we have an opinion and whatever we vote on today, uh, the end of windows and everything is a cease and desist. Because democracies is at hand, because I think if this board is going to be effective and not dividing itself against itself, whatever decision comes out of here, whether it be the person you want, the person I want, the person Paris wants, the person Rose wants, or even the person that anybody wants, once it's done, guys, it's done. We move on and we move the agenda forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivory.
Comment.
Martha Ross?
First, I was hoping that legal would um, actually clear up what the process of um, a search firm, what, what the process is. I was hoping that they would clear that up, but since that's not the case. First of all, IASB is not a state organization, okay? IASB is an organization that all, that most of the boards of education pay a fee to belong to. And I was president uh, when the last superintendent, Dr. Karat, was hired. Any search firm only brings what the community and the board asks them to bring to, they do not hire people. They bring names of people and backgrounds of people. They survey the community and that kind of thing. And if you look at the other uh, uh, firms that were on there, you have all kinds of hidden costs there. You say thirteen thousand, but if you look fifteen thou- fifteen hundred for this, this meeting per, per child, fifteen hun- So it's not fair to say that that's all they, they would cost, but they are not a state firm. They are an, an association that we pay a membership to become a member of. The State Board of Education is totally different from IASB. That's, that, that's, 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 I wanted to clear that up. Second of all, um, there have been some detrimental kinds of things uh, said that really people should be careful of because much of it is not true. I've been through five, six superintendents already since I've been here. I've spent, I don't wanna say an average of, of uh, over twenty-eight thousand hours as a volunteer for this organization, for this school district. And I think I'm probably know more about the history of this school district than most people do. So there's a lot of wrong information and end of windows being circled around. And I think it's teetering on defamation of character in many cases. So I just want to make sure that we know, we know that uh, that I, I said that, so you know, that is not, that's not a state organization. And I did, we did retain them the last time and they brought us five people. And the board decided, based on what the community was saying they wanted, based on the characteristics that we were looking for, based on the fact that, you know, whatever some of the other facts I won't even talk about yet. But based on that, that's how we got the last person. And Dr. Karat decided she would leave. We did not ask her to leave. When her, her contract is up this coming year, she decided she wanted to leave. Okay, so people are saying, well, why are you getting rid of the superintendent? You know, we're not doing that. We're just following process that is supposed to be followed as a public board. Thank you.
May I ask you, Martha, did, did you?
Yep, yep, Mrs. Wilson.
Aren't we having conversation right now?
We are, but I think just to keep it off, it's fine.
Thank you for the correction, by the way. I understood it as an organization that we're a member of, the IASB, just because I've been doing training through there. Did you feel like they did a good job last time?
I, I wanted to say that I was very disappointed with them.
You were.
Because, you know, we had to do most of the work ourselves. See, the board is a volunteer board. And they don't have time to uh, have these sessions with, with uh, community and they don't have the expertise in many cases. So, yeah, no, I was not, I was not really pleased with, with their, with their expertise.
Ms. Christina?
Is that okay if I say something else? I think I agree with Mrs. Ross that all of these companies will bring us the same applicants because I think our people locally that want to apply are gonna apply no matter which organization we hire. But if that is the case, then I just don't understand how we could pay someone more to do the same thing IASB is offering. If they're gonna, if the same people are gonna apply anyway, then let's save this district a lot of money and go with the most affordable.
Just to clarify, Mrs. Ross, they are not gonna do the same. As she stated, they may not attend stakeholder meetings and some other things because of their limited um, capacity, yeah.
Thank you, Vice President McConnell. Is there any further discussion on item thirteen?
Okay.
So we're now at the point where we would make a motion, board members can make a motion for the search firm and they can be voted on in public openly.
I would like to render a motion for B, for the board to select BWP to be our search firm.
It's been moved, second?
Can I ask a question with the attorney?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
If, if now we're going through the list and once one passes or doesn't pass, that's it, right?
If one passes, then it's over.
Or if they don't pass, can they be re-voted again if some other ones don't pass? Either fly or sink though, correct, in this vote?
If we, let's say we, if this president uh, doesn't pass, we can't. Is my question clear?
I'm.
I think what you're saying is if you vote and it fails, you go back in this board meeting and re-vote.
Yes.
I would not. No, I would recommend waiting until the next board meeting.
So a motion has been made. Is there a second? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary?
Where can you watch their voting on?
Yep, um.
Um, the motion that was offered is for the board to select BWP as the search firm.
Mrs. Kostic?
No.
Mr. Ivory? Mrs. McConnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
No.
Mrs. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
President Wilson?
No.
We have six ayes, one aye, motion fails.
I would like to make a motion. Is it appropriate to do so now?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to retain IASB to assist the board in its search for the next superintendent.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic?
No.
Mr. Ivory?
No.
Mrs. McConnell?
No.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
President Wilson?
No.
We have two ayes, four ayes, motion fails.
Like to make a motion? Yes. Like to make a motion to retain from the heart for the um, search firm.
It's been moved. Madam Secretary?
Hold on, really fast before we vote, is there any conflict of interest if Mrs. Ross has an established relationship because she knows the CEO from working on other um, organizations?
I don't have enough information to make that determination, one way or the other.
Okay.
Miss Ross would recuse herself, I think, if she thought.
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Ivory?
Yes.
Mrs. McConnell?
No.
Mrs. Rose?
No.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Nay.
President Wilson?
Aye.
Four ayes, three ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along, we have presentation and suggestions by board members.
Sick of this racism around here.
The policy committee's next meeting, are you ready for that or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Presentations and suggestions by board members. Seeing none, reports from board committees.
The policy committee's next meeting is September third, Wednesday, September third at nine thirty.
Nine thirty, yes, ma'am.
Policy.
Policy committee, yeah, she just announced for.
Grounds?
Uh, yes, uh, Buildings and Grounds had a meeting last week and um,
We'll have a report.
We'll have a report um, from the um, the Architectural Record is going to be presenting at the next board meeting. That was discussed at our committee meeting. Uh, we, uh, presenting a report on the um, master facilities plan.
So Cameron? Hey, Miss, Miss Brenda, you have a committee as well, correct? Okay, we'll get, I could. Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Well, it is now seven fifty-eight and I would like.